Good evening, everybody. To recall this board of trustees' work study, broken farmers grant ISB to order at 6:02 on May 15. For the record, board members present are Tara Rabocic, Marjorie Barnes, Carolyn McPhee, Eliana Garzaloja, Cassandra Hatfield, and I'm Randy Schachman. Kim Grady, our secretary, is with us tonight on via video. She had a vacation scheduled, a trip scheduled, and we and the other work staff weekend in July. But we're glad that she can be here. We dance through the quorum and make a deck business on behalf of the district. As always, we are providing an opportunity for people to speak to the board, an audience for guests. There is no one that submitted a request for audience for guests tonight, so we'll stick there straight through to our work study beginning. And we're going to be starting with our budget workshop number two. And now just a little hand wave to everyone.
Well, good evening, President Schachman and the board of trustees and Dr. Eldridge. I just want to thank you so much for providing the opportunity to share a little bit on our budget progress for the '25-'26 fiscal year. I've also invited Carla Stasi, our budget director, and Dr. Tammy Smoska as assistant superintendent of human resources to share their work as well, just so that you can see that we all are on the same team, working towards the common goal of good fiscal stewardship. So we're going to go over a few things. We're really focusing on the general fund tonight. We're going to go over a few of the factors that significantly impact the general fund, and then provide a little progress on where we stand with five months yet to go. Hopefully, this will earn us. Major things that affect the general fund are legislative sessions, and we are currently in the 89th legislative session. We are waiting on a school finance bill to cross the finish line in the governor's desk. But when this slide was prepared last Friday, we had a different reality, and today is completely different, as does happen often, in this trading of opinions between the two chambers of the House and the Senate. And so we're still in a difficult spot to be able to predict what opportunity for additional revenue might exist, or how we will strategically invest that for the next financial year. So the Senate's hearing of HB2 actually began this morning at 9:00 AM, showing my first point. And the House bill substitute added a $55 increase to the basic allotment instead of the House's proposal of $395. So that's a significant shift. They also have a different perspective on the kind of investment towards teacher salaries only and how special education funding might change. So, you know, we're in this very awkward phase of the House's version of an overall increase with specialized spending requirements, and then the Senate has a whole other idea of how to do that. And since it all has been released 5:00 PM yesterday, we're still digesting, and there is no revenue to put at this point to be able to help inform our decisions. But in the lifespan of a bill, you see, you know, charts like this run around, and I think it's very handy to the layperson to see that one chamber's committee brings a bill to the chamber at large, and then it has to go to the other side's committee and through the entire chamber before it gets to the governor's desk. And none of these finance bills here have gotten there yet, as of last week. So key dates in the session, and I think that's the most important takeaway, is the timing of where we are at today, is Monday was the last day for House committees to report a House bill. Tomorrow is the last day for the House to vote out a House bill. So, and then the Senate has a few less restrictions on how their processes go. So we're really not going to know much until we get to maybe see where the Senate lands on May 28, and ultimately, June 2nd is sign dye, which is the fancy Latin word of we're not having any more meetings after this. And then we'll see if there's any subsequent sessions. So with all that, you know, it does, this timeline does make it increasingly difficult to announce any kind of compensation increases or, you know, move forward with significant commitments within our budget because of the way the different approaches are on both sides of the chamber. So, but the district isn't new to this process. This happened in 2019 with House Bill 3, and the district has just delayed those announcements to fall in line with appropriate commitments that we over-leveraged the district. But what we can talk about today is local share, how we generate our local revenue. And that's generated by taxable property values. And over the last three years, we've seen some changes there. You can see how it's kind of flattening out there on the last three bars there. These are April estimated preliminary values. And so the changes in the homestead exemption have mitigated a lot of that taxable value that we, you as a board, are able to levy a tax rate against. Again, keep in mind that the final values don't come out until July 25th each year, but, you know, it's a good first look. The district not only has been limited a little bit in taxable values, we also have some compression when it comes to our tax rate since House Bill 3. And you can see that now the district is below $1 of $100 of property value. So it's a good day to be taxpayer and CFPID, as we do have one below values. And we'll talk a little bit more about an example, then you can see how this whole formula shows up. But the assumptions that we'll continue to put in front of you, so you see a continuity and the metrics that we put into the very complex funding formula are things like this, where, you know, our projected taxable value growth is 2% this year. We're projecting that that maximum compressed tax rate will be just under 75 cents for $100 of property value. We will remain at 20 cents on our debt service rate to give a projected tax rate at 95 cents for $100 of property value. And here's the most sensitive mouse in the district right here. Here's a history of how homestead exemptions would have affected an example home. So if in 2022, CFPID resident had an appraised value of $200,000 from their home, and they experienced that maximum 10% cap every year, of good taxpayers protesting their values, right, to the cap, the way the homestead exemption has changed the taxable value, combined with the compressed tax rate, has essentially lowered that property tax bill every single year. So the good stewardship and all the information that has gone out since well before our bond election has materialized for our taxpayers. So how can we generate additional revenue? Well, this is not a new slide. We've seen this, and this came from our demographer's report. But we, the only way that this district can generate additional revenue is through number of students and how often they come to school. And that's not a new concept. That is just our current funding formula as it is. So when we look at our average daily attendance trends and our enrollment, like we saw in our demographer's report, we have a decline, and we are working towards keeping a positive attendance rate. And I just want to keep in mind that that refined ADA is a complex formula. It's not just percent in attendance. It has other factors in there, like days of membership, and it is why we have such good partners in our PEEs departments, so that they can keep track of those metrics while my team tracks the eight dollars. And so going forward, we're going with the enrollment projection that was in line with our demographer, trending out the same ADA. But I can just tell you that the best time to validate the refined ADA is after that PEEs summer submission in July. That's when the entire attendance clerks and everybody has validated all the student characteristics and validated all the PEEs calculations, and that refined ADA is the best time to calculate, to make sure that we're all in alignment. Not to mention all the recent ed-fi updates and the challenging nature that we are in reporting. This will be the best time to get our data in. And with that, I'd like to yield the floor to our budget director, Carla Stasi, to share a little bit about the progress thus far in my budget.
So for the '25-'26 budget preparation, I'm just going to kind of go over what we've been doing and where we're at in that process. And so on April 10th, we had the budget workshop, and we asked you guys for your top priorities. And so what we came up with, and what y'all came up with, was number one, ensuring a greater compensation, so that we can make competitive and attractive, retain highly qualified staff with faculty. Number two, develop a sustainable financial plan that supports ongoing operational needs and strategic goals without compromising future viability. Number three, invest in infrastructure, such as upgrades, preventive maintenance to support safe and secure learning and working environments, and also some capital purchases, like buses and bike lanes type of thing. Number four, advertise initiatives, training, and infrastructure that ensure the safety of all students and staff across the district. So that was our top priorities.
Carla, we have somebody on Zoom, so you're going to have to use your coaching voice.
That's just not my nature.
I sound like a game.
Pretending you're at your husband's game, you're in a logic game. Let's go.
Yeah, I'll try harder. You know, not as a good speaker as calling it the sea, so it's not as easy for me. On the revenue slide, the district remains reliable in terms of how we receive revenue. But for the '25-'26 budget school year, we anticipate a decrease in federal revenues, and that reduction is because of reduction in funding for the SHARs program, which is the School Health and Related Services Program. And on this slide, you can tell that 84% of our revenue budget actually comes from local property taxes, where only 14% is supplemented by the state. So that's kind of where we're at. And the only way to influence this, again, like Carla said, was to, is to increase that average daily attendance or to actually increase the overall student enrollment. So that's really the only way that we can affect the revenue. On the other side, on the expenditures, what we want to do is we want to maintain a balanced budget, all right? So the expenditures have to align with the anticipated revenue in order to make the budget balanced. And over the past two years, that's been increasingly challenging due to persistent revenue shortfall. So currently, about 80% of our budget is allocated to staff salaries and benefits. So given this structure, and to bring expenditures in line with the available general fund revenues, it would be necessary to reduce the number of positions supported by the general fund budget. And Tammy will talk a little bit about that from the next portion. And the last slide here, the district has a longstanding history of responsive financial stewardship, as you can tell. What we, our target is four months of operating expenditures. First rating, we were 12 points for three months, so we've always stayed above that, so that's great. In alignment with this tradition, we are taking strategic steps to ensure our continued financial stability. So for, in our budget process so far, what we've had is the campuses were allocated their non-payeral budgets based on the enrollment at the October snapshot. They were not required to do a budget reduction, which is great, because we want to make sure that those funds stay there with the students. And then after the consolidation of schools, what we will do is we will make sure that the budget covers those students wherever campus that they will then be at. But however, we have asked the departments to cut their budgets by 10% over the next two years, with 5% in the '25-'26 school year, and then another 5% in the '26-'27 school year. So what we did is we calculated their non-payeral budget plus the payroll at each one of those departments, and we came up with a total number, and on that total number, they have to cut 5%. And I just want to make sure that you guys realize that that was a lot to ask of them, and it's been a hard process. And we just want to thank all of the departments and the SLT members, because that has been a hard task, but they have really worked hard. And so with that reduction, we think it's going to be about approximately $6.4 million in reduction. So that's huge for the district. So this reduction is a critical measure that will help us make meaningful progress toward balancing the budget. And more importantly, it supports our commitment to long-term financial sustainability, which aligns with the board's budget priority to. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Ms. Smoska.
One slide, one slide. Because we are seven months into the fiscal year, this is the part where Carla and I start meeting on a monthly basis to make sure that what we predicted and what we budgeted are what's going to fit the reality before August 31st. And, you know, at this point, we feel very confident we're going to meet the FY '25 budget, if not, you know, come under the shortfall. And so we're optimistic, I'm going to say optimistic, because we have a great partnership with our campuses and departments in planning for their spending throughout the summer, so we can be very laser-targeted on whatever is left for available budget as permanent savings, if that makes sense. So, but we look at where we're going to land, and we keep a zero eye on that fund balance, because we took to heart that CD 2030 goal. Carla and I are both very competitive people. I'm more on the board game side. I would never mess with her on a basketball court. But we want to exceed our goal. We want to make sure that we meet that four months of fund balance. So if, you know, we want to keep it where it's at right now, at four months of fund balance. But, you know, thinking about all the changes on revenue, you know, we're not able to say this is absolutely where we are today. But one of the things that are not, or a couple of things that are not factored into this operating expenditures budget, there's two critical savings that we still need to nail down as a total. And the first is what our total consolidation savings is on all the positions. So we want to give Dr. Smoska's, you know, full latitude in making the smartest, best decisions for our campuses, because this is a rough time when, you know, we have retirements and teachers moving on to different districts. And so that we haven't nailed down that total number of savings just yet. I expect we will get together in the next couple of weeks to be able to present that actual number. And then we've also identified, since our hiring freeze, we have just under $9 million in vacant positions. So a hiring freeze, you know, at the beginning of this calendar year in January was a strategic decision to curb the payroll budget, so that as people left, and we could examine what those duties were in the district, and if they could be absorbed by other positions, or how we could replace those. We've spent, you know, a great deal of time in cleaning our position inventory, so that we're working from the same data. We have the good systems in place going forward, and so that's been a huge deal between our departments that we're really proud of. But, you know, if you see $9 million and you're sitting in my seat, I'm super excited. But I know that Tammy's going to come tell me that there's going to have to be some people hired, right? So we're going to come up and come up with that actual number that we're going to be able to save there. So I really feel confident that we're going to get really close to putting our expenditures in line. It's just going to be remain to see what revenue shortfall there might still. So that's, the other thing that I'm really encouraged by is the partnership with the members of SLT, that they have really dug in and identified their reductions this year, and know they have a full year to plan for the reductions for the following year. So I feel like that's in a good spot. I was asked to put some compensation scenarios, and mind you, we did this last Friday, when we still thought HB2 was engrossed as it was. This is no longer the case, but we could just throw a what-if scenario. The 40% required spend on new revenue on the old HB2 was going to shake out to, you know, a little bit under $6 million. And it was going to require 75% of that tranche of money to be spent on teachers, librarians, nurses, and counselors. So that's $4.8 million on that what-if scenario. And just as perspective, in '23-'24, the district underwent a TAZNE adjustment, and I believe all the teacher salary schedule was adjusted to an average of 3%. And that was a $3.8 million in those three salary bands. So it didn't count counselors, but in perspective, you can see that 3% increase would be in line if that was the what-if that actually materialized. But just keep in mind that the Senate bill version, the Senate Bill '26, which that language is what's now getting substituted into the HB2 that's being heard by the Senate today, it had like $4.3 billion versus the House's version, which was 7.6. So you can see how that horse trade isn't going to make this scenario necessarily a reality. So, but, you know, we, in a very difficult legislative session like this one, we really lean in on some of our strategic partners who can watch the legislative session all day and make all those phone calls. And so everyone in the Texas Strategic Alliance on the last call, we did an informal survey on who was announcing compensation and who was not. And there was only one in our area that has announced. So as a board, I feel like you have a little bit of time, should you, you know, want to act in solidarity with our neighbors. Just a few other expenditure impacts that I think that are significant to note. The market, when I met with our property capital, these folks, seems to indicate that our property insurance premiums will stay flat, so that's good. Yay, I got to say some good news. I mentioned the current vacant positions and where we're going to target some permanent reductions there. And then I just also wanted to make sure you're aware that the investment in the capital outlay budget from last year was continued in this version of the expenditure budget. So when you make an investment in replacement cycles, you want to keep replacing what's time to be replaced each year. So again, with replacing some of our bus fleet and our white fleet, that's a critical, student-facing, you know, capital investment that it's important to continue each year, or you have so much deferred maintenance, it shows a lot of bond. And again, I reiterated the comment about the compensation increase. So at this point, if I was talking about people and compensation, I'll leave you to Dr. Smoska.
Okay, you're going to drive?
I'll drive.
No, because I don't want to run that thing. So I am going to give you kind of an overview of what we've been doing in the HR department over the last few months in regards to what I've heard efficiency with our staffing. And I know when I was hired, I remember having a conversation with Mr. Morse and Dr. Eldridge, that my marching order is we've got to clean up our PCNs, our position control numbers. And as Carla said, that we've been working hard at that. I will say, as of today, we've probably touched over 1,200 PCNs in our department. We have taken time to look and reviewed at all vacant and future openings. We have looked at needs of each campus, maintaining the staffing ratio. I'm going to go into some of those details here in a few minutes. And obviously, some efficiencies through our consolidation and where we were able to absorb any type of excessive positions there. So if you could go to the next one. Obviously, staffing is based on enrollment, and what we have to do as an HR team is make sure that we have the correct data when we are looking at current staffing needs. In the early part of January, we sat and met with every single principal, looking at the enrollment at that time. We dug deep into the master schedules at the high school level. We went teacher per teacher, class period per class period, because we know that even though it's a full-time unit as a teacher, they may only be teaching three classes because they have LPAC duty or they have another additional, where there's non-students in there. So we took into consideration all of that. We took into consideration, you know, some of our special education teachers might be counted as a full-time unit, but we know in some of our self-contained classes, they only teach maybe five kids six periods a day, you know? And so when you get into the nitty-gritty of all of that, you have to be very conscientious of how we calculate that ratio. And so we worked really diligently to make sure we met with those principals. And then when PASA came out with the projections, we brought them all back again to look at one more time with their enrollment counts, and then identified some opportunities where we could absorb some of our positions, but maintaining our staffing ratios. So if you can go to the next one. So our district, I do want to say that we have been very faithful at keeping the 22 to 1 staffing ratios for our elementaries and our 26 to 1, which is a very, very, it's a lower number than what I'm used to, but that's what the district has in the past few years calculated our secondary staffing at. It's 26 to 1, so we've not touched that. Keeping in mind that most of our secondary campuses, especially the high schools, teach six of eight classes. So they all have a common plan, they have a planning period, and then they all have a PLC. And so we took all of that into consideration when we did the calculations of, here is the number of staff that really would be efficient for your campus. If you want the next one. And so this is very, very preliminary data. As Carla mentioned, we're working very closely to, I'm working constantly with the technology department to get a good report, because you really have to dig deep. But right now, I can say, through the consolidation and through the staffing formulas, there have been 21 positions closed based on the staffing ratios at the elementary level, which is a cost savings of approximately, and again, this is based on a salary of $70,000. And again, this is just an average cost, so there's about $1.4 million savings, cost savings there. At the secondary level, and the secondary number here is only through the absorption of the 26 to 1, teaching still six of eight. The principals were able to say, you know what, this teacher retired. We have enough staff to cover our class sizes. We can give that back. And again, all of these positions have gone, it's through absorption, retirements, resignations, those that have left the district perhaps. And then the other side to all of this is the actual position closures through consolidation or excessive or excessive vacancies that have may have been vacant for three or more years that have never been filled. And so that's the one here that that's a very preliminary set. We know for a fact that we have a hundred and eighty positions-ish or more. That's what we're trying to really do a good audit on. And so we would like to bring that at our next workshop, exactly what that's going to be. And I feel good that, as Carla mentioned, we're getting it cleaned up. We're getting it very, there's going to be some real good cost savings through that process as well. And so in addition to cleaning up our position controls and the consolidation and absorption of some of our staff through our student enrollment and ratios, is that we have also launched a comprehensive study with TASB. We're doing another salary study with them. And even though I have here, we're focusing on teacher pay, professional pay, and bus drivers and stipends, they're looking at all, all pay grades, all positions, and are we within market? Because obviously we want to attract and we want to retain our staff. And so they're hoping, I'm hoping we're going to get our first draft here early next week, if not first of June. And they'll come back with a recommendation. They will do a comparison, market comparison midpoint. And typically the best practice there is are we within that five percent of market to the midpoint of that pay grade? And so we have launched that. So I've been spending a lot of time with the TASB team, giving them data, giving them job descriptions, you know, what does that job description do? And then are we effectively paying them appropriately? The reason why we're looking at some of the, really on the bus drivers, paraprofessionals, and teacher pay, those have been, especially our bilingual and some of our special education, those have been our hardest to fill positions. And so we're wanting to make sure, are we, are we competitive enough? And so that's, like I said, we are looking at all, we're looking at counselors, nurses, we're looking at all positions. But, so we have, we have launched that and we hope to have that in the next week or two. So, and with that, I think that's my last slide.
And so I was just going to say, in summary, I just want to keep in mind the timeline. Because of all the unknowns, I'm not sure that, you know, we will have all the information we need by the next budget workshop on May twenty-ninth. But we will continue to provide all the information we have as we get it. But I have a very kitschy, rhyming takeaway slide because that has been the theme of this month is to celebrate, the celebration, reduction, and legislation. Establishing systems is probably one of the best things that you can do in the first year of leadership. And the fact that Dr. Smoskus and I are coming in at the same time and aligning our systems, it's a, it's a, an assurance for success in the future. So that clean position inventory, and I know it makes Carla super smile too because attaching the number of positions with a clean dollar amount allows us to use our ERP system the way it was designed to predict the budget in a way that will be able to be using that budget as that living organism all year long and she'll be able to, you know, validate that all year. But then again, I just want to reiterate how grateful I am to my partners on the SLT for really ponying up and doing, doing the hard work in the last couple of months. And then of course, legislation will continue to impact our draft that would be ready in June. Are there any questions?
Do you go back to slide number twelve, which was the ADA to the transfer? So we can see that ADA is dropping, but enrollment's also dropping. And it looks kind of like a consistent trend. But while sitting here, I did a ratio calculation on the last three years and our ADA to enrollment is actually increasing. So if we were to actually pull those two together, we see a positive trend, meaning that our students are coming to school more, even though there's a downward trend on this. So the work that's been done to support attendance is working. We've gone from eighty-nine point eight to ninety point seven when you compare that ratio. So I just want to make sure people see that it looks like it's this grim downward trend, but that comparison to ADA enrollment is showing that the work that's being done to keep kids in school is actually increasing that connection.
And subsequently, after we're done with questions, I've invited Mr. Graham from El Casey to provide the results of our staffing studies. So TASB is helping us with the dollars and El Casey is assisting us with the number of people. And he has a great slide coming up. I don't want to steal. But I'm glad you picked that up.
There's thirty-five slides, one of them great, so y'all.
And then I think for the benefit of the public, when you look at slide, the slide that has the deficit, it is May, it is not August.
Correct.
And there are a lot of variables at play.
Absolutely.
Especially with the legislature. And I just think it's critical, we've been, I've been on the board four years, so you've been longer. Like this is an ongoing process to get to the right numbers. And so this is nowhere near where we're going to end up.
No, all the potential changes to expenditures would be decreases. It's been very well distributed information amongst my peers that we would not be entertaining any increases unless it would essentially emergently affect kids. And so everything else has been planned for. Whatever got you through this year should be able to get you through next year.
Seventy, oh, it's back at ten percent, that's over two years, right? So six million is?
The first year.
Okay.
This is the first year.
Question? On that, will we still, we still be double blocking athletics with the schedule change?
We have not.
Sorry, we've not had any discussion about changing our schedule. So as far as I know, everything's maintaining the six of eight, double block athletics. We've not had any conversation about any of that.
You don't wait for me to talk because I can't hear anything in answer.
Kim, we have not changed our block scheduling. I know that there were some principals that had met to get together to suggest that, but we have not done that. We have not changed.
Sorry, can we have a six, this, each of them a six period day? Would that change the blocking of athletics to two periods if we did back to the eight period day?
No, Kim, we're not, we're not touching the block schedule. An average equivalent unit is calculated for one when they teach six of eight. Now we know coaches, they have six of eight, they just might have four of them in the athletic field. That's their class. They're out, they're out there doing their athletic classes.
So on the staffing ratios, ratios slide, the position control, success, elementary, secondary, and position closer, closures. So I just want to confirm, the twenty-one and sixteen mentioned, these are vacant positions, closed, right?
Combination of vacant positions.
Retired.
Yes, through retirement, through resignation.
Natural attrition.
Natural attrition, absolutely.
Okay, so just for some terminology clarification, I guess in those savings, in those situations through the attrition, those would be a cost savings because we were spending the money, but now we're not spending the money.
Right, we don't have to.
But on the other vacant positions, that is not a cost savings, that's a budget savings because we're not spending the money on vacant positions. So it would improve the budget position, but not, no change on the spend.
That's right, that is correct.
And then on the same slide that Ms. Hatfield mentioned projecting the fiscal year end, I'm going to go back and revisit my exact same comments from one year ago. And, you know, to the board, it is an absolute priority that y'all figure out how to insist on a quarterly forecast. There's no longer an exception to this. I mean, that request has been flat out ignored and y'all need to see how it's happening throughout the year. So spending is where, that drives spending decisions, spending review, all of those. Because we do not want to be in a position again where we can't see what has happened. And additionally, I know y'all are making spending reductions. I mean, I know y'all are working on them. And it's the same thing as last year on the request. You know, yes, it's on staffing, but where are the details on the other things? The list and the information and not just an ask, 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 but it's here's the give, give, give.
With the hundred and eighty positions there, is that impacted by any Esser funds? Esser teachers or whatever that was, those are removed completely?
That's correct, yes.
So another thing is, so we talked about departments are making this ten percent cut over two years, five percent each year. And that was payroll and non-payroll, so they were taking it for both areas, but not to campus budgets. How can we know that every stone has been turned? So energy efficiency. Like I, I need to see a list of the stones that have been turned. Because I know you guys are turning stones, but this all talks about people and it doesn't talk about the other expenses other than to say we did a five percent reduction. So if we've got refrigerators in classrooms, that's electricity. Like there's so many things that I need to have confidence before we go into another stage. If the legislature does not come in, we cannot hope the legislature can do anything. So how do we show that we've turned every stone over? And I need to have some more confidence going into the next step of like, these are the stones we have turned over. That would really help me because I can turn to this and I can show the community this presentation and I can explain this, but I can't show the stones that are under the hood that aren't positions right now. So that would really help me.
Other comments, questions? Thank you all for the presentation and I think we're probably ready to go to Mr. Graham's, maybe his thirty-five slides.
President Shackman, ladies and gentlemen, board, Paul is coming on and Dr. Eldridge. Thank y'all for having me this evening. I'm glad to be here. When President Shackman introduced himself, he said, oh, you're the bright person from location that has all the answers. And I said, no, I'm just the wrong messenger. You know, I'm the guy they sent to be killed if the message is not well received. But I did bring that bright person with me, Dr. Abrahamsane, who knows quite a bit about Carolton and she's seated behind me. Y'all have to forgive me for a couple of things. If I, I'm not trying to ignore you by not rotating my head. I was blessed with a little head-decked throat cancer and so this is about how far my head turns now and my slide fuse. And so I'm kind of just this old stiff body. And so if I slur a little bit, it's radiation I've not been drinking. I apologize.
Do you have any margaritas?
They got my attention when I got here and I realized where I was. I do, before I begin, would like to tell you all what a pleasure it is to work with Carolton, Farmer's Brad. Carla and Tammy, if I may refer to them by the first names, have been wonderfully responsive. The data's been accurate, it's been timely, and it's been incredible. And I've told you superintendent, I was never her peer, I was employed as superintendent at the same time, but I've never resisted being a peer of Dr. Eads at all. But it was my privilege to be a superintendent for twenty-five years in the state. I have been superintendent of three districts with the planning enrollment and it is difficult at best. And so I commend the administration and the board for the prescient manner in which y'all are planning and moving forward with this. I truly do. I looked at a couple of slides that informed what I wanted to say this evening. I see eighty percent of your total budget is being in payroll. It doesn't feel like it's a cross-all plot to include debt service. And so if we're talking about just M and O, I think that percentage is likely higher because there's also recapture in there and that was not a net of recapture. My experience tells me that we need to turn over every stone. We do need to turn over every stone, but that you'll find less than three percent of your budget to be discretionary. I mean, that's, that's just a fact. It doesn't mean we don't pick everyone, doesn't mean we don't look under everyone. And I applaud everybody for doing that. So a couple of ground rules, like it's my board meeting, it's not, but I have ground rules anyway. One, I would like y'all to accept that we're not here to tell you what to think. We're just trying to tell you what you might ought to think about. And it's not at all important to me that the board thinks together, it's important to me that they think alike, it's important to me that they think together. And I also believe that well-informed, respectful disagreement is the opposite of democracy. But it's got to be well-informed and it's got to be respectful. So I commend Dr. Eldridge for trying to get it, and her team for getting as much information to you so that you're making informed decisions as y'all try to decide amongst yourselves what the best answer is as you move forward. Carla Bishop, systems. So a couple of things about systems. I'm glad y'all are systems thinkers because research is very clear that eighty-five percent of the time when something goes off the rails, we look for somebody to blame. Team doesn't win, everyone changes cover, drive. But the research is very clear that eighty-five percent of the time that things go awry is the system's fault. Only fifteen percent of the time is it true to the people that are involved. And the only people that can make strategic decisions and work on the system so the system does not work on their people are simple here tonight. And I really appreciate the, as an observer for many years of boards and superintendents, the manner in which y'all are approaching this. Y'all are not responsible for the causation in which you find yourselves in right now, but you are responsible for the response. And once again, I'm appreciative that y'all are responding now. Just to kind of set the framework, in my people mind, in the way that I view Carolton, Farmer's Brad, we've not had an increase in base, I'm telling y'all, y'all only need to know what time it is. I'm going to tell you for a second how to go to watch. Y'all just have to forgive me for that. The state's not had an increase in basic allowances since twenty nineteen, HB three. It was sixty-one hundred and sixty dollars, you know, in child attendance. If we use the comptroller, Texas Comptroller CPI, and we adjust that number for inflation, it approaches seventy-six hundred dollars. So inflation is, you know, has consumed fifteen hundred dollars of that sixty-one sixty. And I am an old observer of our legislative process and I'm not at this juncture. I'm not speaking for El Casey, I'm speaking for Lloyd. Hopefully, what's good is going to come for school difference out of this session, okay? Now, hope is not a strategy, but creation of hope is, y'all are creating hope. The causation of the issue is exists. If we take fifteen hundred dollars a child times your current enrollment, then you're about thirty-seven and a half million dollars behind the ball where you were in twenty nineteen. If we add the decrease in enrollment to that number that approaches a little over five million dollars in my people mind, all done with my mind and not anything else, then you're about, you've got about a forty-two, forty-two and a half million dollar, dollar for dollar, nuts that you've got to crack. And that is very difficult. And so I was taught to believe that there are management decisions and there are ethical decisions and that ethical decisions are deciding the harm we must do. And it will be hard to some programs and be hard to some, you know, organizations and things as you move forward. It will be unavoidable, that's the nature of an ethical decision. But y'all are getting the best information that you can and I'm very appreciative of what you do since you're doing. I'm sorry, am I not speaking loud enough?
Well, Kim was struggling, so I just segmented the mic over by.
I apologize. I'm generally, I'm self-conscious about how loud I am, okay? I truly am. So Carla, if you'll hit it, I'll get off my soapbox, okay? Table of contents. Enrollment, that's wherever you want to start. Here's our, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I know that y'all have seen this and so I won't relate it, but the districts that we use to compare were done in conjunction with some demographic studies that we did and what's pointed out by the district. Denton Garland, Lewisville, and Kenton Richardson are your peers who will be looking at this study, please. Enrollment of the peer districts, you ladies and gentlemen of the blue line. Enrollment of your peer districts, you ladies and gentlemen of the blue line with the dots, you can see where we are. This is the twenty-four, twenty-five data as it exists right now at twenty-four, one sixty-five. Having a little difficulty reading it. But fact of the matter is, when you take a look, if you're down over seven or eight hundred kids in that four-year period, it's not a precipitous drop, but the smallest hole will eventually drain the largest container. That's what I'm saying. Now, here's something, and Mr. Sanders spoke to this earlier. It is, it is always of interest to me to take a look at ADA to enrollment ratio. Twenty-one, you were at ninety-two point eight. Twenty-two, ninety-one point one. You would, you know, when you look at the COVID year, going up in the COVID year, and twenty-two, twenty-three, you dropped eighty-nine point eight. Twenty-three, twenty-four, you're up to ninety point six, and to the point that we made earlier in twenty-four, twenty-five, the data as it exists today, not the data as it will exist after graduation, you're at ninety point seven. But what generates money is a child being present in school, not just enrolled, but present in school. Okay? Thank you, ma'am. Demographics. This, once again, is, is showing the, what is a steady decline since twenty twenty-two in, in enrollment through twenty twenty-five teams as just now. But I want us to stop for just a moment. I'm not telling you anything you don't know. I'm gonna tell you something I don't know, but it's difficult for me to see from here. That's my fault. I'm used to up and pacing and being an ass scoreer of course, I guess. But I want you to look at your SPED numbers. Not only is percent representation up, but the hard numbers on special education are also from thirty-four, fourteen to what I believe is forty-three, twenty-eight. So, that's about a nine hundred child increase. Nine hundred is about twenty-eight percent of thirty-four. That's a significant change. Look at your DL, your emerging bilingual, your DL numbers. You're gonna take what is, this is not quite two thousand, I don't think, but I'm gonna use two thousand. Two thousand is twenty-five percent of A, so that's about a twenty-two or twenty-three percent emerging bilingual. But it is also curious to me that the economic disadvantage numbers are declining. So, this is simply to say that there's a shift in demography that I know that you're all aware of, but it will affect the type of staff that you will need. It's just that simple. We, we minister to children where we find them, at their level of the. All right, this is just a staffing profile through twenty-four, twenty-five. This will be a four-year period with five days mark. We're taking a look. You can look at this slide at thirty-three, fifty-eight. People, this slide was twenty-three, twenty-four, and at thirty-six, eighty-two. We're now at thirty-six, thirty-six. We can see, you know, your auxiliary personnel has moved up even in a decreasing year. Teachers' aides, which I think are the best value in public education, that's just me editorializing, are up, but an increase in teachers' aides to me, as a standard of practicing superintendent, also to me indicates an increase or a change in demography, and the need to come from a change in demography. You know, the blue number, student services personnel is up about ten type of programs. They have kind of, they're gonna provide services. Central office administration and leadership, you know, there's been some coding changes here we'll talk about that appear to be slightly up, and it looks to me like your teachers too, Tammy's earlier point, are, are tracking enrollment the way they should. That's kind of just an easy bread and butter calculation to make. And, and so, we have declining enrollment. We're going to have to have declining personnel. You know, if you look at the line share of the percentage that they are, if you're right. This is just something I find interesting. This is pie-chewing finger-based pay. And if you look at the pie charts for the region ten total base pay, for the state of Texas, total base pay, and for Carrollton Farmers Branch, total base pay, you don't really see any of the pie charts that are out of line, any pieces of the pie that are out of line without the region or the state term. I'm not always sure that the state's the best measure. I always think the region could be a pretty good measure, okay? But nonetheless, the folks that are in office making decisions will use the state as a baseline. Y'all need to be cognizant of that. All right? Staffing profile. This tells us something, okay? This is students per employee, students per total staff in this school. And so, when we look, that y'all are at six point six five number of students per total staff. The region's at seven point five, and the state's at seven point two three. So, ever since twenty-one, twenty-two, y'all had fewer students per total staff than either the region or the state. Now, the downward trend that we see from, from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-four, twenty-five is incremental, and that's likely occasioned not by the addition of staff. We just saw the staffing went down to twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-three, twenty-four. To me, that's an indication of your enrollment. But nonetheless, staff is going to have the following enrollment, or it's simply not going to work long-term. Yes, ma'am? How about teaching roles and teams? Who are your teaching roles? Ladies and gentlemen, y'all have, although your pupil teaching ratio moved up, what appears to be six or seven tenths. It moved up seven tenths. It moved up six percent from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five. Y'all have very low pupil teacher ratios. Very low pupil teacher ratios, and you can see the region and state kind of mirror each other. And your pupil teacher ratios remain consistently below, although, if we were to go back and look at the bar charts at the start, where I know that it appeared to me, that your, your teacher was, teacher enrollment was starting to track the enrollment, your teacher, a number of teachers were starting to track your enrollment trend. The chart we were just looking at, tend to bear that out, given the curve in it. So, I also think that's stress and proper. Campus administration leadership roles. These are just principals and assistant principals. This is number of students per principal and assistant principal. Ladies and gentlemen, your camps administrators are carrying two hundred and seventy-two children apiece. Region ten, two hundred and fifty-eight. State, two hundred and fifty-nine. Now, the scale on the graph may skew this just a bit, but what I want you to look at is that it's, by comparison, I don't think one could argue that you're overstaffed in campus principals and assistant principals.
This is the opposite.
Yes, ma'am.
The higher the graph, the better, when you look at the ratio versus some of the other ones, but we want to get the bottom.
Correct.
We want to get the top.
Well, but I'm, yes, ma'am. That is correct. And often, to your point, these are kind of, you know, misinterpreted to anything higher, you know, personnel as well, but we're vetting children to units at this point in time. And so, y'all, you know, if y'all are good there, I know you've got some consolidations and things, and people are gonna need to be shifted around, but I think the slight drop from twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five, if you're operating a campus, you've gotta have that number of APs and Bs, and, and so, you know, to me, that's just an indication of the enrollment trend. I don't believe anybody was added in there. Fifty-five, fifty-six. My dad's mouse, very, I can't work that mouse with you, Mike.
Sensible.
I mean, it is the most sensitive mouse I, I ever had. I hope my truck doesn't steer that way. I'll be in a ditch. These are the roles that are your leadership roles in central administration. But what I want you to look at, and we'll see it on the graph, that blue, light blue, that check thing that Carla is circling. Instructional coaches were shifted over to central administration several years ago, and that hasn't really skewed the data. Okay? So, what I want you to look at, when we see this, you can see where everybody, well, not everybody, the region and state were at twenty-one, twenty-two, and that the angle, the drop of teachers, excuse me, of students per these roles in central administration followed the same angle as the state and as the region. Okay? Now, once again, we tipped up slightly. We saw the reduction in personnel in the first bar chart. We picked up slightly going in twenty-three, twenty-four. We dropped going into twenty-four, twenty-five, and I think that's enrollment drop. Maybe we go up to the pie chart for just a second, where we had the money, or how we were spending our salary. I'm gonna go back to, or, or, go back to this pie chart. That's coding, and that's people, but that's not dollars. I mean, it is dollars, and it's not dollars. What I mean by that is, y'all are four percent on central administration. The state is four percent on central administration. The, the region is three percent on central administration. But if you look at a couple of the other parts of the pie at the region, you'll see where that difference true to lies. And so, we're, as, we'll go back to the students per, I don't know where we were. All right.
Great.
I don't know, because I don't work in Carrollton Farmers Branch. But when we see the number of students per central administration role in where we are now, and, and lower, but we do not see the total payroll cost out of line without the region and the state, that tells me, I don't know this, but that tells me that y'all probably have a lot of teacher support in central office and instructional coaches and programmatic specialists in those types of things. Okay? And so, this is not, this is not superintendent and cabinet and... This is not those types of roles that are driving the issue. Okay? Thank you, ma'am. Student services, a lot of folks in student services. You know, I'm gonna have teacher facilitators, children, officers, therapists there, the slide for prairies, LSSPs. You know, now, we have our instructional coaches up here on the left, but I will note that's historically where they were, and, and so, on part of this slide, historical coaches, instructional coaches are in there. Um, part of, part of the, part of the dates in this slide, they're not, because they shifted to central administration. Okay, please. Y'all are below both of these measures at fifty-five versus sixty-four versus sixty-six, and so, they say fifty-six to sixty-four, that ain't, that is fifty, fifty to half percent of fifty-six. And so, y'all are carrying about, I mean, we can see the percentage spread there. And so, student services, the number of students per student services has been below the region and the state and is trending down. Once again, it's likely enrollment, but this is someplace that I might pay some attention to. Educational aid. We track educational aid, not because there's a ton of money in educational aid, but because they tend to trend changing these in the district, and they tend to eliminate that very well. I also firmly believe that, that a well-trained age to partner children is about the best value that you can have until all costs. And so, when we looked at the change in emerging bilingual, and looked at the change in SPED, we looked at the change in afterrist over on one of the previous charts. I've seen that the increased pay would be in response to a change. I would also tell you that this impacts to me that the demography in Carrollton Farmers Branch is coming more in line with the region, more in line with the state. Auxiliary roles. Okay? These, in my mind, as I look at these roles, these are the non-adjunct roles, you know, hourly employees. Y'all are right with the state. Region figures a little higher, but if you look at the numbers there, here's twenty-seven point twelve, and twenty-three, twenty-five. The state's at twenty-eight point thirty-nine. That's one shot. I don't, I'm not saying we, meaningful discrepancies that can start me here. And once again, we see that downward trend that I believe is verified, the continual decrease in, in enrollment. Peer comparison. Okay? When we look, I want to see, I told people that it's people, seven percent. I can't read the list without the number. Six-two? I'm sixty-two. Garland is at fifty-five, Denton is at sixty-one. But when we look, and I see Denton, I see Denton at one percent. I'm not picking on Denton, but when I see Denton at one percent, I say, well, that's great. I think, ah, there's some protein and knowledge there. And, and I see, you know, that the total support staff is up some, and, and that campus administration's a three percent. So, when I see somebody that is that far skewed from what I would consider DMA nor NAR, and I'm, I don't, they're buying Denton? I don't know. You're watching or listening. I'm not picking on Denton. But I think they've got folks that are on teachers' contracts that are doing some placard and payroll things, trying perhaps to even better, right? Perhaps not, but that's kind of how I, I read that sort. That does not cause me any call in concern for Carrollton Farmers Branch. Our next is link to McKinney. All right? I would say McKinney's demography is not shaped, not shaped here. I would say it's much closer to fifty-seven, two percent, ten, four percent, four percent. We didn't know any of this when we picked the peers, when we picked the peers based on demography and who, and who y'all's paying for, and work together. But I see that these things falling in line to each other. I don't see anything here that can occasionally be heartburn, except that McKinney doesn't employ teachers. I would know McKinney's not employing teachers. And so, you know, when I see that sixty-eight percent in total base pay for teachers in McKinney, that I don't see that they have four, five percent in AIDS, that, that makes me more difficult to code it, and I'm not picking on McKinney either. It's, it's not known. I say all this to say, I don't say anything here that could occasionally cause regard to Carrollton Farmers Branch. Peer comparison, student staff ratio. There you go. Okay? Take McKinney. McKinney is the outlier here. If you were to remove McKinney, your regression to the mean would be tied, but you can still have the lowest student enrollment per total staff. This is just a graduate peer as opposed to the state and the region. Student enrollment per teacher ratio over here, and this is the peer as opposed to the state and the region. Here at thirteen point fifty-nine, Lewisville is thirteen point fifty-six, Denton at thirteen point seventy-five, thirteen point ninety-seven. This peer group is fairly, is fairly tight, okay? Which y'all are still below the average here, but I don't see a spread here that's something. I don't know what's going on. Yeah, it would, and it looks like to me that that's anomalous. Student enrollment for campus administration. We talked about that and saw that earlier, but this is compared to your peers. And so, yep, y'all, y'all are right at the mean, right at the average, and I think this is all because I'm a, you know, that you're, that y'all be proud of if you are with your officially staffing leadership on your campus. Okay? All right. I'm back to Denton assuming something up there that y'all have. For central administration ratio, this is everybody in the central administration. We looked at it earlier. This is compared to your peers. And so, y'all do have the lowest number of students per central administration, total administration. And that would be, if everybody's in the, that's your faculty, I'm an employee. I'm a non-adjunct employee. I'm a student, big specialist. I am a registrar. I'm a receptionist. I'm whomever. This is everybody that's here. And so, this total number is lower, and I will also remember to remind you in here when you see that particular drop, that instructional coaches got moved in. All right? Total dollars aren't out of line. We have the bottom of the number for a number of people. Something to be looked at, but it's not something that alarms me as a practice superintendent. Support services. Light blue on that. Educational aid ratio is kind of all of the charts, but I've spoken, y'all, how I see that. And I think that precipitous downward drop, well, not precipitous, but incremental downward drop from twenty twenty-one state. And I will note to you that these twenty twenty-one states, that that's our declining, that's our declining, most of the problems with the chart. And declining in, in educational aid, declining enrollment in educational aid, that may actually be in one place where enrollment directly affects number of ages, but not in an inverse way, because it's a need driven by SPED, by emerging bilingual, and so forth and so on. And that's probably a number that's going to stay out there. Auxiliary staff, ladies and gentlemen, y'all are just low on students per auxiliary staff. You were low compared to the region, compared to the state, also low compared to your peers. So, that's, you know, you're below the mean there, so that's something I might pay some attention to. Teaching experience is just situational awareness. That's all, that's all that's, I, it's just something I think that, that toward generally need to be aware of. I know that you're administrators already are. You have a large number, a high percentage. Not so much higher above region ten, if you think region ten, got eleven percent, dollar twelve point three percent, three eleven, twelve percent higher on getting teachers in the region as a whole. And, you know, I, I stop and I think about that, and in my mind, that tells me a couple of things. Number one, Carol Performance Branch is a horrible place to work. And number two, that'll be getting teachers that are working there. Might be able to afford to have them all. And so, I don't think that that's bad thing. That's not something that, that screams a thing. From one to five number, you know, you're right in line with regions of, the mean's a little lower, but region ten, you're well above region ten. That's where the, that's where teachers are beginning to strive. It takes at least three, if not five, years. So, I'm looking for balance of years, uh, experience of these two together, forty-five percent, please. Twenty percent six to ten, pretty sweet spot, eleven twenty, twenty percent, that's a pretty sweet spot. And then. Our next slide, please. Oh, there you go. Twenty-one to thirty, eleven percent, and over thirty, two point four percent. So, twenty-one to thirty, where are you going to find the folks that are going to be eligible for the time? Certainly those with thirty years of over, or like of all of the elements, uh, thirty years of experience, like the elements of time. So, y'all got some experienced faculty here with you. And I think experienced faculty and, and stability is a wonderful thing. And because I know y'all focus on improvement, retention, capacity building, in particular, capacity building, and I know that's the. Not in Carol Performance Branch, but in some districts, there are people with thirty years of experience, and there are some people with one year's experience thirty times. But you've got your system set up with, uh, the way that, that we do evaluate, which is, or I have looked at, I've seen that, what your goals and objectives of the board leadership are. I know you are building capacity with people, and I think you guys are good. I feel it makes it straight to teachers' staff. Is that all I have? I have one more, and I'll talk about that, thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, the key word here is draft, uh, not NFL, not draft. It's something that we're still working on, although I do have, uh, a quick note that executive something that I wanted to show you. If we looked at your high school, uh, get the block schedule, there was a question, I was cutting you online. If we had changed that block schedule, uh, superintendent, uh, emphatic that we had not, had not done that. But we did an analysis of the cost of running a block versus running a seven of eight. And this is with seventy percent efficiency, assuming only seventy percent of the teaching staff would teach seven of eight at the secondary level, and thirty percent would not. So, you say, why would that thirty percent not? Well, you know, we do have some coaches, we do have department chairs, you know, uh, we do have, you may or may not share, uh, assistant or associate, a fine art, uh, man director between campuses or so forth and so on. So, there's never a hundred percent in seven of eight. And so, we use seventy, uh, seventy, uh, of, uh, of teachers being able to teach seven of eight. And the investment in the block schedule with that analysis is ninety-three full-time equivalent. And if your average salary is seventy without the bar, for me, like, seven times nine, six to three, and then three times seven is another two hundred and ten. So, the investment we're making to run in Carol Performance Branch, I'm not saying it's right or it's wrong, but I'm saying the investment in Carol Performance Branch to run the block schedule is six, is six point five and a dollar. And I did the math in my mind, which is a scary place to go, but, uh, six point five being looked to me like three point, three point three thousand. Being five hundred and ten thousand. And if I take that and I get the ratio or the percentage of that total payroll, as I would understand it in this district, that's two point six percent total payroll. And that's across all, all employees in the district, total payroll in the district. Uh, that ninety-three unit, which is going down, I know that y'all are absorbing some secondary position. I, I get that, I see that, I don't assume all the secondary positions being absorbed, or at the high schools, assuming to be at dental school. But all things being equal, and we've done a complete and detailed analysis of about forty-five to fifty pages of this same thing. It's still in draft form being refined, because we've not had a complete conversation, uh, with Kami and Carla about it. Certainly not had a complete conversation with, with superintendent, I, with Layfield, and that's just, uh. We're not off on that. Okay. We're not off on that number. That number is, is a solid number. Uh, my belief is that it might matriculate up to, and I help make it matriculate down because of the thirty percent of the, of set aside. Or only two to five, six, seven. Try to check, uh, lay it forward, uh, so that every, y'all are forgiving that math. You know, I know your name, Wendy. I'm sorry, my tongue, my tongue's not working. I would say I stand for questions, but I sit for questions. Yes, ma'am.
So, on the, the block is, would it be possible to be able to tie student performance or achievement data to prior to us go into block to coming, um, back to understand, is there student success at risk from the financial? Now, I mean, I remember when we went to block and aside the education factor of remembering whether it was A day or B day, you know, for students and parents. You know, did we see a benefit, you know, I remember at the time, it was that students were going to be learning for longer, more focused, more diligent. So, did we see success or any kind of difference in that data to compare?
Mash, clarify quick.
Yes, sir.
How long have we been on block?
Yeah, I don't, I don't even remember, probably four or five, maybe four hours.
Okay, so, five years?
Yeah.
I think that's an easy enough analysis. I believe well-taught is well-taught. Uh, I, and that's just, I don't speak for your, you, please, you understand, I won't speak for anybody here other than me. I, I believe well-taught is well-taught. I also know that if total number, we did an analysis on total number of instructional minutes. Uh, and if we look at the total number of instructional minutes, teaching seven of eight versus teaching six of eight, if we want to say it that way, the total number of instructional minutes go up in a seven of eight versus a block.
Well, and that'd be a driver, and I, I honestly, I can't remember why we went to, you know, the specific reasons on the block. And I mean, I wasn't bored, you know, decision, so.
I, I'm not.
Worth looking into, right?
No, ma'am, it's a fair, it's a fair question. It, it is a fair question, because I'm not arguing for efficiency. I'm talking about investment. This is, y'all are, y'all are stewards, and so, this is how you're investing these instructional dollars. So, we were just going to be, you know, we'd be looking for it all our life, which is what you're talking about here. And, and often there's a cultural shift or so forth, so on, going six to eight, and it's new, and it's fun, it's good, and it needs to work, and. I'm not a, I'm not anti-anything. I don't work against anybody, but I prefer seven of eight. Actually, the truth of the matter is, I prefer a completely accelerated block on nine-week course, but that's just impossible to run today. Okay?
I'm bucked here around.
Achievement days, so.
That, that number goes up substantially, so we're not even talking about that.
Yeah.
My point is, is I'm not against the block. I'm not arguing against it. Y'all are spending six point five million dollars on.
And that's a hefty cost, but I want to make sure, and we've always talked about money. And making sure that savings don't come at the impact of risk of our students is a risk.
And I think that's why, um, to Miss Brady's point earlier, that this idea was tossed around in finance committee. But in order to quantify the amount that we could potentially save, we still have to involve leadership in learning. And that's a, that's a lengthier discussion. In this one instance, math is easier.
And that's a big number.
But speaking to the leadership and learning piece, we also have, well, this data shows we've got a variance in our teaching staff, but at the same time, we know that new teachers coming into the class and have less professional development that's been provided, that's a fact. And when they teach six out of eight blocks, the planning time, if used well, could be supporting their professional growth. So, my question would be, if we were to give up, it, it's the impact to student achievement, like Ms. Vojic said, but also the impact to teacher professional development. So, does that mean that, yes, we give it up, but we also recognize that we still need to build in more PLC time once in nine weeks, and we still do it, have to invest in that piece? Because we're not just, yes, the savings is important, but our whole goal of student achievement is supporting our students. And when you take planning time away from teachers, it's going to have some impact somewhere. So, but I also see, you know, teachers' time is extremely valuable. The landscape has changed. So, I would just ask that, like you said, that this not just be financial, but this also be leadership of learning. And if we're going to give up time, or consider giving up time, to put teachers in front of kids, then how are we going to support them and make sure that they're still able to have high quality instruction in classrooms?
And, and to your point, and I think that's why, um, it can't just be a finance committee decision. This is a collaborative decision that takes, uh, and when I spoke to my peers, I mean, they're asking for a minimum of twelve months before you can lift this off. So, this is not a, oh, this sounds like a great idea, let's launch it in August. It, it takes a significant amount of time to plan for, calendaring all the.
And to your point, and back to that thirty percent that's teaching five or six of eight as opposed to, you know, that with leadership and learning, superintendent's leadership, when you stop and you think about this, well, do we say our first-year probationary teachers that will be with us for this amount of time are going to teach six, you know, with a mentoring period and bill that PLC time, right? I mean, there's, there's, in that thirty percent, you know, in that thirty percent that's there with that seventy percent factor, there's room to give leadership and learning that type of opportunity to, to play with. Your point, what's that?
The planning is critical. Sabrina. But I think that also leads to the discussion on the number of campus, um, administration as well. Because with the percentage of the, what was it, one to five-year teacher and supporting staff, I mean, that's what part of the campus administrator's role is, is maintaining that staff to not only support those early-year teachers, but handle all the other things they have to do. I mean, that they're required to do, um, but ensuring that we support those early-year teachers so they move into that next, um, that next stage, what was it, ten to, um, the next, the next stage. And we're not having that kind of turnover and reinvesting the time or dollars on mentoring and teaching and learning, you know, for that. So, I think it maintains the need for campus administration.
It, it does. Your point is not lost, and it is well fixed. But I, Dr. Hay and I have known each other a while, and, you know, I know that it's improvement, retention, but the only way you do it is capacity building. Now, you know, I, I am proud that, that y'all got, had to dig into numbers, you know, be within five percent, so forth and so on. But when you look at the research, if you're within the top plan, and when I say research, I don't, it was written on the internet, so it must be true. The, the, the period of research would tend to indicate, uh, when we look at HR research, if you're in the top twenty percent of total compensation, not just payroll, but total compensation within an area with which I can still live in Carol Performance Branch and drive, uh, you know, people probably aren't leading for itself. Okay? And, and, you know, it's affirmation or lack thereof, and, and this building of capacity that you're talking about, it's an awful firm thing. It is. Y'all are in a good place with the people.
I would just also ask that, as we think about working with the leadership and learning department, that we also work with campus administrators and make them a part of this, because it's going to impact them, and they're really smart people that can give a lot of insight.
This originally was their idea.
Yeah, our high school principals started meeting to discuss that. They were concerned, you know, some of them have more programming than others. What does that look like when we have CTE programs, extracurricular, you know, they, they felt like, you know, where do students get to participate and where is that time? Is it blocked, or are we going to be responsible for getting our students there? So, all of those factors, they have made lists, and that's what started the, um, research behind that was from our principals. So, looking at the best use of time, because there's also a thirty-minute advisory period built in at the high schools that the, it's, the consistency is not consistent. Some of them are more efficient than others. What that was designed to be was help with intervention in everyone, that thirty minutes is a significant amount of time along with the block scheduling. So, what does that look like? So, we all.
I have a question. Okay, and maybe this is just confusion on my part, but going back to the, um, stopping study. And, you know, we looked at the, pointing out in the demographics that our numbers have grown, our sped numbers have grown. And our, uh, EV and ELD numbers have grown. And then going into looking at, like, the student, teacher ratios, and then even the peer comparisons, and seeing that we're kind of below, um, like, on teacher ratios, we're below some of our peers. Um, but also, we, when looking at the enrollment, sorry, I'm all over the.
No, we're good. Look, I.
When looking at the enrollment, and we have, uh, this doesn't go over the sped numbers, but in terms of the, um, EVL numbers, we're much higher than everyone else. How does that affect those teacher ratios? I mean, and is that, could that be one of the reasons why, you know, in terms of sped, why we actually have a smaller ratio?
I would say to you that that's a driving force. But I would also say to you that, you know, with regard to your neighbors, there may be some difference, but y'all haven't reached the state numbers on sped or EV, L L. And so, you know, and you're, you're thinking the right way, and you're looking at the right things. And it's kind of what I want to, I'll speak up, I'm sorry, I'm so cognizant of how darn loud I am. I try not to be. But I talked, when I was speaking to you about you needed to see the significant change in your demography. And, and so, you know, I don't know, I do think the type of teacher needs to change. I'm not sure the total number of teachers needs to change, you know, from that standpoint. And I, and, you know, we're a, I don't have the state's demography off the top of my head, but I think we're twenty-six percent white, non-Hispanic. Okay? About thirteen or fourteen, maybe sixteen percent, uh, black today. And, you know, that are, uh, that we're well north of sixty percent, you know, free and reduced, you know, and, and we're well, and, and we're majority. We're looking at enrollment in public schools, we're, we're majority Hispanic. And so, yes, ma'am, you, you make an excellent point, and you're asking the right question. And so, I'll say this, you know, leadership is not a property called self-importance, it's called a service. And it's not about, I think, telling the board, it's not about the answers you give, it's about the questions you raise. Y'all got a good group here that does a good job of trying to anticipate and answer your questions. So, please keep answering, asking them, because they'll get a better answer than I've got for you.
Okay. So, I make sure it's Mark, Mr. Attrey.
Yes, ma'am, and you are.
I'd like to add to that, uh, so, that would be an increase in expense for the ED teachers as well as sped, is that correct? And on the flip side of that, it's more revenue for the sped children, isn't it?
It depends on the version.
Okay, well, but just seeing these figures and the impact that may or is occurring. Is there any additional for the ED growth?
There may be.
Maybe, that's to be determined right now. I mean, there's proposals out there for that.
Right, and I think you might be referencing, um, the additional, like, title entitlements, like, the, the title fund entitlements that come with emergent bilingual. But there is a spending requirement on the general fund too. But to your point, additional ED students doesn't always mean, or additional special education students doesn't mean that, um, you know, revenue. you know, revenue that exceeds our already established spending. Because we don't have problems in those two areas needing our spending requirement. We almost always exceed our spending requirement in those two areas.
And thinking just one step further about the block, they would benefit being in that class longer to understand or learn to deeper concept, the emergent bilingual versus?
Yes, ma'am, your point is taken on time and I'm not trying to, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sure you should answer your question. But I would say that most of this effect, most of the effect of EVLL is at the lower grade for block, if I'm concerned. Okay, we should be exiting to the children now to some matriculate into the high school.
I just said that we had a rash of
We had a high enrollment in middle school, so we added quite a few aides because we could not find certified teachers. And so that accounts for our peer professionals that were helping our children that could not, that were new to our, to American schools. And we felt the ratio to students, to our peer professionals was the right thing to do for kids. Because they were teaching them how to, you know, perform, it could be on a computer or just teaching them language lessons. And in a bigger, the levels of language were all different as we took that assessment.
That's value in public here.
Right, so Lloyd, I want to go back to page eight. And the coding of our instructional coaches that were coded for central administration, because this has been, you know, questioned at length regarding central office positions. They are coded as central admin, but they aren't housed. They are, we went to areas and how our areas are served by different people to be strategic. And
I'm going to change the chart.
Okay, I just, like, I don't, I don't have 40 new administrators. That is the coding.
No, ma'am, I know you don't.
Yeah.
Here's, here's where it shows up. Okay, I, I'm not, you know, Dr. H, I'm not, I take off the slide you want to be on. But you can, you can see the shift. And this, this is just what the state's requiring you to do, very respectful where they're housed.
Correct.
Okay? And I don't think that, I think if you had 40 new people running around inside your building, then everybody wouldn't be on this, everybody was going to cry. And you don't, but that was just a mandated shift that happened very quietly, by the way. I learned that when we did this for Waco over those two years. And Dr. Ken Cannon was going, I don't trust what you're doing here, because I know I'm coming down in central administration, but this big number, teams coded person knew, but most of the rest of us did not. And so when we see these numbers, let's be mindful that that jump from 411 to 261, that that was absolutely driven by, by coding. And you can see it shifted up going to 23, 24. And then that slight downward shift in teachers per, us union students per people coded 41 to leadership, that's got to be simply the simple design of your enrollment, that jump. I don't think there are a lot of people that are there. Am I addressing your question?
Yes, I just, I, I just wanted to make that clear, because, you know, when I was researching it, at first I thought it was the counselors, because we, you know, we absorbed some counselors that were funded through ESAR. And, you know, we didn't want to lose our counselors. And, you know, that was a, a board decision after our ESAR funding went away. And I think, I think some of our counselors were coded admin. But when we did our due diligence of looking at it and we found our instructional coaches were the majority of coded admin, there's been some discrepancies regarding that. And I just wanted you to clarify it since you've been doing all the research for that.
Have I done that for you?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, I mean, and it is, it raised a lot of eyebrows with a lot of boards and a lot of constituents of boards.
Are there any other questions? We look forward to settle to the next stage of our budget workshop. Thank you to all four of you who informed us. We missed you remind us that money is important, but kids are always the driving influence. And we're proud to be able to say, a high achievement for all students has always been what this board has been about. And thank you for your support, your information this evening.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. Adalys Caballero, gracias por su tiempo, gracias for receiving me in, gracias por tenernos cara cabeza en este mundo. Ladies and gentlemen, for those of you that speak Spanish, I apologize for my pronunciation. For those of you that don't, what I said was, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time and thank you for receiving me in your home, where you believe every child is a genius, every head is a world of its own. My point is, is that I was saying the right things, but we weren't in the same language. And what these ladies and your superintendent is doing is trying to get y'all common decisions for the ethical, common language for the ethical decisions that you're going to have to make. Amber and I are deeply honored to be participating in this and we stand ready at any point in time, just as carefully as possible. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Reporters, we're going to take a break and then we will resume and close session and work on the last part of our agenda for the evening.
Questions or comments? Or suggestions for tonight? Oh yeah, we are back in session. Eight thirty one. All right. Then we will bang the gavel and we will conclude this meeting. Thank you for your participation. Budget workshop done up to this point. All right, have a good evening.